Are you ready?
Yeah.
For all of us meeting in the order, please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Let the roll call show that all board members are present. Melissa is joining us via Zoom tonight. And we will move right into our student showcase. Oh, Sue's not here, that's right.
Yeah, so can we make sure that the minutes reflect that Sue is not here?
Yes.
Should I go here? Is this okay still?
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Okay, great.
It is our pleasure to have Princeton Online Minnesota to be our board showcase this evening. You see a familiar face, a community member, a parent, and a teacher, and now a director of our Princeton Online Minnesota. And she can introduce herself to all of you and kind of share with you a little bit about the program. And I do believe that one of our students will also be joining virtually as well.
Yeah, yeah, we thought we would shake it up a little bit. We're gonna have some in person and some virtually, so you can live our world a little bit. So my name's Rebecca Fuller, and I'm the coordinator of Princeton Online. And so I have a PowerPoint. I don't know if Emily was gonna share that.
She will.
Great.
All right, can everybody see it on the screen?
Yeah. So why don't you... So Princeton Online has been around, of course, you know, for a while. And probably about six years now. This is my third year in coordinating that, so we're excited about a lot of the the changes that we've done and just to make it better for students. So if you just wanna go to that second slide, Emily? So just supporting that mission and vision of Princeton Public Schools. And our focus in Princeton Online is to build those effective relationships that'll really motivate and engage students. Because the goal is that they are learning and they are engaged and having that accountability. Just a quick minute. Go on to the next one, please. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what's going on this year for our program. We currently have, our enrollment is sixty-six, and our out-of-district students is twenty-one. And so compared to last year, we're up by forty percent in our full-time students, and our out-of-district is up seventy-five percent. So that's really great. So our goal is to support students not just in our district, but throughout the state of Minnesota. For our part-time students, and those are students that are just in our district, we do have one out-of-district person, but we have about a hundred and eight students currently. This trimester taking anywhere from one to three classes. And you're gonna hear tonight from two students that are part-time students and a student also and a parent that are full-time in our program. So we have one hundred and forty-two online students choosing that mode of learning, right? I mean, that's our new legislation, and that online is about having that mode of learning that's available. Some things that we've been working on this year is just continuing to evaluate and adjust that live synchronous. We talked about that last year. And we are seeing students live every single week, and not just asynchronous where they can work on it anytime. So that's been something new that we've done. We've seen some great relationship building with that and support for students. The other piece is that we're really working on marketing our program for Princeton Online. We've been doing that through brochures and the website, and also contact to some surrounding districts. A lot of districts don't have online as a mode of learning, so we have been contacting them, letting them know that we are available to support them and answer any questions. We hear from students that come in, where they got that referral from, trying to collect that information. So those are a few things that we've been working on. So let's have you hear from our guests tonight, okay? If you wanna just go to the next slide? Great. So the, just to guide their perspective, the questions that they're gonna be answering is why has Princeton Online been a positive educational option? Because that's what it is. It's just an option for students, whether it's part-time or full-time, and why have they chosen to do that? And what's working for them that was not, you know, working previously in that, whatever that situation was. So, yeah. Why don't we, have you already let our virtual student and parent in?
Yep, I show Tiffany Williams in the...
Yeah, Tiffany. Tiffany Williams and her mom are here, and they're with us virtually.
Say, Emily, could you just maybe stop the presentation mode? And so we can see their full screen of them.
Hello.
Hi, Tiffany.
Hi.
Uh, we don't see her.
Yep. Um, I'm working on it. Hi.
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 Hi, Tiffany. Hey, you are in our boardroom right now, and we have a few people here just wanting to hear a little bit about your story. Tiffany has been full-time with us, and this is her third year. And she's in eleventh grade. And so she's kind of talking a little bit more from that perspective. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your perspective?
Well, I personally, I have found that doing the online stuff has been really effective for me and my learning. I have been suffering from a lot of mental and physical problems since around COVID started. And I was able to do virtual learning through half of the school year in ninth grade. And then ever since then, I was doing full online since then. I, with my physical disabilities and my ineptitude in a lot of areas to be able to just be around and be able to get to school and everything, I've found that it's very helpful and flexible for me to be able to do things at my own pace and at my own time. And communication with teachers, I find is much easier than it would have been in person due to my own anxiety. I don't really know what else to say.
That's great. Is mom there, Tiffany?
Yes.
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Hello.
Hello.
So has this been, just maybe just a couple points on how this is worked for Tiffany? Or is there anything additional that you'd like to say other than what she has communicated?
Sure. I do think, like she said, this is a lot easier for her trying to navigate than being in person. She didn't wanna go into too much detail of what the struggles were as far as her mental or physical health. But like she said, she struggled for quite a few years. And as far as the doctor appointments and things like that. She really struggled with attendance and keeping up with class and the things that she was supposed to be learning. And she just found this a lot easier to stay on track. And she really likes the attendant or the assignment calendar where she can go on and see exactly what's due and when it's due. And she can kind of track the progress and see what her brain is day by day as assignments are turned in. And then she is passing all of her classes now, and she's on target for graduation next year. So that's something she's really proud of, because she was worried about that for a couple years.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well, I really appreciate both of you being willing to share with us your perspective. Couple other points, you know, when Tiffany first started, we were concerned that she would graduate on time based on situations. And what I will tell you for all of last year and this year, she is always my student that always has basically my best grades. She is always on track. And she uses the program so that if there's some challenges going on, she can take time to get her own self-well. And then she can, when she's feeling well, she can just hit it then, and it creates that flexibility for her. So yeah, thank you so much. All right, so we'll hear from two other people here, and we have these people in person.
Thank you for coming.
All right. And this is Sydney. What do you do next? Sydney Buford, and she is, go ahead and you can sit down there. She is a senior, and Sydney's been working part-time at the high school for three years. So she has worked on, we were trying to figure out how many classes, and I think it's probably around eight. We guessed around eight. And Sydney's classes are more investigative and career-minded. So she's doing Introduction to Human Resources, Introduction to Math, or to Health and Medical Sciences. And she did an entire year or two trimesters of that. So she's taking those courses that are not available in the high school that she can explore more types of careers. So why don't you talk a little bit more?
So I moved here in tenth grade, and so I was trying to do the college classes and figure out where I wanted to go to college. And so I saw that the school had offered some college classes, but then there were some online ones that I felt could be filler classes as well as helping me towards the basic knowledge that I would need. So one of the classes I'm taking now is Intro Introduction to Nursing, because I went to go into the nursing's program at the Midge State. And so I found this was a really good way to learn about the different positions and the different jobs and the work. And that was not offered in person, so having that online really helped me and is making me understand of like different perspectives of nursing. I am also currently taking the HR class, which is a lot harder than I thought. But it's actually really informative because I didn't realize how much HR and those jobs had. And so I've been learning about the different laws, the HIPAA laws, the just, all the different programs and trainings and what they have to do to keep a company together as a team. So it's been really beneficial to me as filler classes, but also more informative and helping me into different career options throughout.
Super cool. Any questions? Have we ever heard? I just asked if there was any questions.
No questions, that's awesome.
Pretty impressive to be able to get up and talk to all these people.
Yeah.
Strong words.
And this is Alexandra. She is in tenth grade. And this is her second, first year, right? Yes, you did a first try, excuse me. Yeah, so this is her second class. So tell us a little bit about what you're, why you're enjoying it.
Well, I'm enjoying it because it has a lot of flexibility. And when you're the oldest of a lot of kids, sometimes you have to stay home to like take care of them. So a lot of times I'm gone is because I have to stay home. So when I take online classes, I have this thing where I don't have to worry about if I missed any notes that day. So it's much more better for me to be able to like just look at my calendar and be like, oh, I have this going on. Oh, that's okay, I can just do it later. Because it will give me instant feedback, and I don't have to talk to the teachers and be like, oh, I'm gonna be gone this day, and then get all the work, and I just model up.
So it creates a lot of flexibility for you?
It does.
Awesome. That is great. And she did more than English. She's done creative writing and media studies, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so she's kind of hit some of, I know last year we had talked about that you had some interest in maybe going into some law. So that's one of the courses we try to, Introduction into Law is kind of similar to HR. We usually have our juniors and seniors do some of those courses because they're pretty rigorous. So, yeah. Awesome, good. Well, thank you so much.
Great morning.
Well, that's it. Just wanted to hear a little bit about our stories. And please feel free to, if you ever have any questions or any information, just let me know, and I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, I think Rebecca's doing just an extraordinary job. And you know, one of the pieces that we really want to do is, well, two things. Is if any of our Princeton Public School students that live within our district are considering online, or if they feel like that's the best mode of education, we wanna be their first choice. We wanna have a strong program for them to consider. We wanna keep our students, right? And then the other piece is we're trying to attract students from across the state of Minnesota. And you know, we've developed several marketing strategies to get the information out. We've had to learn a lot on how social media algorithms work and how Google Analytics work. And to allow us, you know, when people are typing in, I wanna go, I went online school in Minnesota, you know, we wanna be one of the top choices for them. So we do have a robust website. We've developed videos over the years to have testimonials. And you know, one of the things that we had to do a few years ago is really, before we could tell our story, we felt like we needed to get our house in order a little bit in our online programming. So we revamped our curriculum and our instruction. And we are feeling very good about where we're at. Rebecca tells me that it's some of the most high-quality, you know, programming out there. So that's been good for us, and we're proud of that. So under Rebecca's leadership, we've, I really feel like that's been a big reason why we've been able to increase enrollment. And one of the things that we've done recently too is develop these, you know, brochures so that we can go out and meet with some other central Minnesota schools that possibly don't have an online program, so that we would be a consideration for them to refer students to. And we're really targeting the guidance departments at high schools for the most part. Things have changed in online world quite a bit because after, there was a point in time where there was only certain programs in the state that were approved by the state of Minnesota. We were one of them. After COVID, they kind of opened the doors to that, where now they probably took whatever there was for approved programs, and now it's times, you know, again, I don't know, it seems like everybody, a lot of districts have them. Now, you know, I think that over the course of time, some districts have maybe weren't able to keep their programs or have some stability. So, you know, we're trying to be out there as an option for them if they, you know, choose to no longer have programs. Any questions for Rebecca?
No, just thank you very much. I had not thought about, I appreciate that you brought three different students that have three different reasons why this works for them. You know, I never really took a lot of thought into, you know, why would somebody do online? But this really helped, really helped my perspective. So thank you for that. That was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to citizen comments. Can anybody just...
I'll grab it. I don't think there's any.
You don't wanna go fast?
Nobody's on that list.
Nobody's on there?
Okay, I want that list.
And then we will move on to board member committee reports. And we'll start with Chad.
All right, Eric?
Last week, I attended the MSBA conference and during the finance.
All right, Dawn? I attended the MSBA conference last week. We did a short agenda for executive, and then tonight policy, and then public engagement.
I just have no plans.
Melissa?
I had the school board conference and then also policy and public engagement. And I did just want to say that I, one of the speakers at our school board conference was already, it was the code.org guy. I can't remember his name exactly, but he wrote, he teaches computer code and all this to all the other kids. And I actually went on after their speech about how important the computer sciences are. And it, I had signed Lincoln up for my seven-year-old for like a free account, and he's been working through it, and it's so fun. And he's like, today it's his little program, and I wrote eight lines of code or something. And so yeah, I think that's definitely something we should look at, you know, offering to our kids.
Very fun. Thank you. I had actually two public engagement meetings since our last board meeting. We had agenda planning and a finance meeting tonight too, so. Student council.
Yeah, so we had a constitution update. We got new advisors, and it was new year. We wanted to look through the constitution and refresh it. There was a few things changed, but our parts specifically. Report to the board about current matters with student council and other student matters. Communicate with executive board members. So bring to the board all school matters, not just high school. I know we've been kind of focusing on high school, but one of our goals is to talk about all the schools, not just high school. And then, do you want to talk about Pizza Barn fundraiser?
Um, yeah, so also just to go off what Ellie said, at our last executive board meeting, we also discussed maybe like meeting with like the middle school student council, maybe once a month too, just to see like what's going on over there. And maybe even like have some like leadership opportunities, just kind of like show the middle schoolers like what our student council looks like, since they will be coming in as freshmen pretty soon, and just so that like they can kind of get exposed and be like, hey, like, here's the different kind of positions. Here's what each of them do. Like, we'd love to have you in our student council and stuff. Just like, kind of get them more exposed to that, and then maybe even like they could bring those kinds of positions to their student council. And so yeah, and then we also have a Pizza Barn fundraiser on January twenty-second from five to eight. We'd love for you guys to come. All profits go to student council. And we do a lot of great things with that money. Like we started a lot of great donation funds and stuff like that this year, so.
So if you don't wanna cook dinner, come to the food. Just be honest. And then other things besides student council. Leo Club has a pop drive, pop tab drive still going, I know. Competitively, it's been fun between the teachers. There's a bit of competitiveness there. It started January third and it's ending the thirty-first. So you could always bring them to me, and I'll give them to Ms. Mylum. She has currently three five-gallon buckets full, so we plan on winning this. But we would always enjoy, we would always enjoy more. I think the office has us. They have a few five-gallon buckets full. But hopefully we can win the hot chocolate prize. That's the goal, anyway. And then prom committee just met this morning. They're talking about themes and scheduling like times and all that behind-the-scenes stuff, so.
And then the snowball dance for student council is January twenty-sixth. We just got all of our decorations ordered. We're looking forward to that. Yeah, everything is rolling like super smoothly with that dance too. We got it in the gym this year, so it's a semi-formal, which is something new. So we're a trial and error this for future years, but so far it's looking really good.
Yeah.
Good, thank you very much. Superintendent?
Thank you very much. Those of you, well, you've all worked with me for a long time. And you know that generally speaking, when I make remarks, they're just coming from the heart, and they're things that I don't necessarily have scripted or prepared. But tonight, I did do that, and I think that should first and foremost share with you the magnitude and the gravity to which I feel what I'm about to share with you entails, okay? We've been talking about our school budget and our district budget for a while now, right? Every year we go through a process. And I just want to share with you some thoughts that I wrote down. And we can take some questions that I know later on in the agenda, we're gonna be talking about budget quite a bit as well. So in January of each year, we start our budgeting process. Our district leadership is very fiscally conservative, and we have historically underspent our budget each year. However, as expenses grow, our budget process is becoming more and more challenging. For the last twenty years, state funding has failed to keep pace with inflation. And I think we demonstrated that and shared the graph, and that's also in our legislative platform. Even with last year's historic funding, the most that we've gotten, right? Certainly more than the two percent that we've gotten the other years. State funding has failed to keep pace with inflation. Even with the historic investment in public education during the last legislative session, the chair of the Education Finance Committee admitted it is not nearly enough to make up for two decades of underspending, underfunding. In recent years, in Princeton Public Schools, we have made strategic decisions to tap into our savings, which is our fund balance, hoping for more adequate financial support from the state. However, this is not sustainable. We can only spend from our savings account to pay for ongoing expenses for so long before we run out of money. The money that's in the savings account is one time, it's spent, and it's gone. Our costs are every year. There are important things to know about Princeton Public Schools' budget. We receive less funding than ninety percent of the school districts in Minnesota. Less funding than ninety percent of the school districts. The 2023 Fiscal Disparities Report show that we are in the bottom seven percent in per-student funding and revenue. We don't have a local operating referendum like many school districts do. Compared to the state average, we receive three thousand dollars less per pupil unit than the state average. You all can do the math for yourself to do three thousand times the number of students, even if we were at the state average, and see how much we would have more annually. It's an astounding number. There is a misrepresentation that last year the legislature fully funded education. I don't know what that definition is. I sure, I sure know that if we were fully funded, we wouldn't be looking at a huge deficit for next year's budget. That was the governor's vision, but it did not happen. Yes, the legislature did pass larger funding than previous years, and we are grateful. At the same time, they passed all, many new historic, new mandates that substantially increased costs for the school district. These are all well-intended mandates, but they have real costs. I personally think that they're all great, but there's a cost to them. Examples are earn safe and sick time for all employees. That's awesome, but there's a cost to that. This is a new benefit for some employee groups, but not all. All employees must be paid for e-learning days. That's great, but that isn't something that we've done in the past. For example, paraprofessionals on e-learning days had not, had not reported to work, okay? Now there's a mandate that that must be paid. Additional paid professional development, increased unemployment benefits in the summer for nine-month employees. These mandates rooted in the desire to elevate and make our profession more competitive, which is awesome. Bring about necessary changes, but also pose financial challenges we have to navigate. So with wages, utilities, transportation, and other expenses increasing more than our revenue increases, we are in a difficult spot. The legislature also heavily invested in earmarked projects, including the REED Act, free meals for all, teacher pipeline programs. All worthy investments, but the funding does not help our budget. On top of all of these concerns, our projections show... On top of all of these concerns, our projections show declining in enrollment due to declining birth rates. And you've seen some of the demographic studies and some of the birth rate studies indicating that we have far less births being, happening within our school district by boundaries. This will impact our revenue. And I should note that this current year budget in 23, 24, we were conservative in our enrollment projections and we are, and we are starting, we started the year with 120 down. Okay, you can do the math on how much less revenue that is. When we're projecting next year's budget for enrollment, we're projecting a decline, a further decline in that. Do you have that off the top of your head?
We will be talking about that.
You'll be talking about that. Okay, this evening you'll be getting a good, your first look at the FY25 budgeted forecast. There's reason to be concerned. We are people business and more than 80% of our budget goes to staff salaries and benefits. In the state formula, if the state formula is increasing by 2% in the 2025 budget and our bargain agreement settled much higher than that, the math just doesn't work out. Even as fiscally conservative as we are, we will run out of money. We need to pause. We need to take a long term look to restructure the way that we do business. We can't afford to maintain the status quo much longer. Over the next few months, we will be taking a close look at our budget to implement multi-year cost containment strategies to provide future stability to our general fund budget. This will require thoughtfully looking at our staff ratios, fees and a freeze on spending to protect our district's future. This is not a problem that is easily solved. And we will not, we need every team member to understand and engage in conversations about program redesign and cost saving strategies. Michelle's going to go through the budget tonight. We've known for years when we've been able to project out on our operating that, you know, we would get to this place. And thankfully, over the course of the last four or five years, honestly, we, we probably should have gotten to this place sooner. But we had some positive things happen, right? We, we had some unexpected growth in enrollment. We're not seeing that anymore, right? Through, through the pandemic, we had some increased under spending, which also was able to buy us an extra year or two. Okay. But you'll see through Michelle's, you know, presentation. Okay, that for next year, when we're setting next year's budget, if you take a look at a 2%, our, our increase in next year's budget would be 2% from the state. That's going to equate on the pupil, per pupil unit to be about 500,000 to 550,000 of increased revenue. That's great, right? If, if our projections are true in terms of what we're looking at for decline in enrollment, that will be about a minus 500,000. So basically next year, you can do the math, right? You can see the 500,000 increase from the 2% and a 500,000, subtract 500,000 due to less enrollment, you're at a 0% increase in your revenue. Okay. Our expenditures are right now in terms of estimates for increases in next year's budget is right around 3.5 to 4 million dollars. Okay, so that's a gap that we're going to have to wrestle with, right? To be, to be able to continue to provide the highest quality programming for our students and have this be a high quality place for our team members to work. But at the same time, we all know, all of you know, and everyone knows that we can't go broke. So that is a significant problem that we will have to work together to solve. I've talked to some of you about my strong opinion, professional opinion that we will have no other choice but to go out for an operating referendum at some point in the next two or three years. Right? We are proud of the fact, and you've done a strong job as a board to be able to have a financially stable district with being one of the small percentage of the districts that don't have a board or approved operating referendum. We knew at some point in time, the day would come for, that we would have to do that. Okay, and, and I'm telling you that the time to start seriously thinking about that is now. Operating referendums, you can only go out in November. They're different than bond referendums. Okay, so it's something that the board needs to start thinking about. Because we, we just simply cannot continue to sustain having a three to four million dollar gap. Cause once we, we spend that, spend the savings account down, that will get us about one year, maybe two if we're lucky. Okay. Then we're broke. State comes in, takes over. So, I mean, that's just the dire situation that we're in on our, on our operating. And Michelle's going to share more details with you on that. You know, thankfully, we're not, we're not there, we're not going broke now, but it's something that we need to be thinking about in the next couple of years. We will need to find a way to get additional revenue to sustain the quality programming that we have. So that, that ends my remarks.
Thank you, Ben. All right, we'll move on to item number seven. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Sold.
Motion's been made by Eric Stramberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any comments or questions on that? All right, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Agenda is approved. Item number eight, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Sold.
Motion made by Eric Stramberg. You got a second, Chad? Second by Chad. Any comments or questions on those meeting minutes? Meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, those are approved. We'll go on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion's been made by Eric Manks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any comments or questions on those? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, consent agenda is approved. Our first informational item is the facilities presentation by Ellers and ICS.
Hi, Jody, you want to come up? You've all had, you've all, well, you all know Jody because she's presented to us many times. But she's going to share some additional, I guess, research that she's done related to our future opportunities that we may have for any kind of a increase in local levy that could be for a bond or an operating referendum. And trying to take a look at the debt that we have as, as a school district that is passed on locally for our property tax payers. So we'll turn it over to Jody.
Great.
And then you want, you want to have?
Have the chart? Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have the chart. And then also Ryan from ICS is on the screen as well. And he's coming in virtually. So Ryan will have some commentary and remarks, I'm sure. And Jody will as well. So Emily, could you go ahead and put that chart that we put in board book up on the screen in presentation mode? And then Jody, are you going to start?
Either way, did you want to start Ryan or do you want me to start? What?
Go ahead.
Okay. Wait for the chart and.
Emily, you going to do that chart?
Yep, I'm just bringing it up here.
Okay, so this chart dates back to the refinancing of your bonds that we did last fall. So just kind of want to refresh where we ended up with that. You'll see that for taxes payable in '22, that's the year that is the first bar there. For 2023, this is your tax rate for your capital and debt levies. So not your entire school levy, but it is a big share of the property tax levies that are paid locally. Taxes payable '23, that rate went down a little bit. We did restructure the debt to keep the tax rate level for taxes payable '24, which allowed us then to capture some savings when we refinance for your taxpayers. So when you refinance your debt, you're not able to keep that savings for your budget. You are required to pass that savings on in the form of reduced tax levies to the taxpayers. And the dotted lines where we show the reductions, it'll, these are also shown on this chart. So at this point in time, we, the board had been talking about a referendum, but we knew it wouldn't take as effect, as, take effect as quickly as taxes payable '24. So that was the strategy for paying off principal a little bit more quickly, giving you some future capacity and saving money for your taxpayers. We did then for taxes payable in '25, we have a little step down there. I know that there have been discussions about the bond referendum. So that would be, that provides a little capacity or flexibility to address potentially bond referendum. We know that there's projects at the high school in particular, I believe, indoor air quality projects that have some pretty critical needs there that we could use that capacity toward. And then you'll see that we have some flexibility going forward too for future projects or referendums. So just kind of wanted to get that baseline in front of you again so that you had a sense for where we ended up. And of course, we update this plan pretty regularly as we get information on changes in your tax base from the county and that sort of thing. So Michelle is used to seeing this from us quite a bit, but just kind of wanted to share with you the last look that we took at it. And it was back when we did the refunding bonds in the fall.
And I'm going to do a quick timeout there too, because I know Todd Rapp from Rapp Strategies in the back too. Todd, you want to maybe come forward too and maybe participate in the discussion a little bit? Because you might have some insights or thoughts for the board. Don't ask me to respond to Joey, she's ready. I don't know, I'm sorry, I probably didn't tell you it was coming.
I'm sorry.
We're used to each other.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, because can we talk a little bit about, I think, I think one, one thing that's important for our board is, you know, anytime that there's a decision for us to go up for a referendum, whether it be bond or operating, that you want to be able to time it to where, if, if there's some debt falling off potentially, if you were, you would add some additional debt to, to keep it more even. So you don't have the huge ups and downs in terms of increases in taxes or decreases in taxes. So it's, I think, generally speaking, it's in districts best interest to be able to try and keep things as stable as possible. And this chart kind of shows the board different opportunities to where they potentially could go up for a referendum. So could you, could you just speak to the, to the fact like, like how long? At what would be the span of time that the board could consider going out for a referendum while still taking advantage of the step down?
Yeah, I mean, so anytime in the near future, I mean, what, you know, we'll work with you. You've got plenty of flexibility, so we'll work with you to, to do our best to mitigate tax impact at whatever point you're ready to move forward. But you can see that you've got some, a few different points in time when we have some capacity and some flexibility for you. So.
Okay.
And I think Ryan will talk a little bit about project information, projects too. But yeah, so we, we did our best to keep everything really stable. And we did again for taxes payable in '24. And that is always our goal unless the boarders approve an increase. We do like to keep things very, very stable and we, it gets, it's been pretty stable. I think with the growth in the tax base, some of the tax rates have come down. But I, but generally speaking, those, the tax rates have been, have been pretty close from year to year.
Okay. Ryan, now might be a good time for you to, to jump in on some of the projects you're, that might be on the table.
Yeah, so that's exactly the, the chart, there's a good representation. If, if the board is, is more in line or thinking keeping the tax rate pretty stable, as, as Jody's saying, we have some projects at the high school that are indoor air qual, indoor air quality qualifying, which are board approved projects that do just that. They improve the quality of air within the, the facility. So the, the beauty that we have there, it's, it's actually a beauty and a curse. The, the high school has different areas in which projects would qualify for indoor air quality projects. So we could kind of create a project to keep that tax rate very stable over the next few years in preparation for potential, you know, bigger bond project down the road. So we haven't gone through and, and done the, the full budgeting of different style projects yet or different area projects, but there are buildings, there are areas within the high school that for instance, do not have dehumanification. And for people in, in the room there, that means air conditioning, which is one of those air qual, air, indoor air quality measures, along with ventilation rates, along with able to control the environment with, in relation to humidity. Those are the, the things that, there are some areas within the high school that do not do that. And we can, we can use those areas or, or get those areas completed. Because they've been, they've been on the radar for the long-term facility maintenance plan for quite a while. But as you know, when those projects are prioritized, you generally kind of take the ones that are of very high importance and, and almost urgent. And so this, this indoor air quality stuff at the high school has been pushed a few years down the road. And, and we are at the point where it, it probably does make sense to, to get some of those things done. And it, and it kind of helps us out in the long-term tax stability, if you will, as well. So that's kind of the, the two cents I wanted to provide for the board as they look at that chart step down. It's great to have a step down, don't, don't want to deny that, but it's also great to keep it exactly the same. So there are, there are projects at the high school that have been a priority and, and could fill that, that bucket as well. Hopefully that makes sense.
If there were, if there was nothing on the list, if you didn't have any needs, absolutely nothing wrong with taxes step, with this tax rate stepping down. But the fact that you do have needs, this is an opportunity then to be able to address some of those needs without creating a tax increase.
So does that mean that the tax level, oh, I'm sorry, can everyone hear me?
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, we can hear you.
Does that mean that the tax level, I'm looking at the chart, for the 24, 25, there's a step down. Does that orange? I'm sorry, does the project that Ryan was talking about, the air quality at the high school, would that make that go up or stay about the same of where it is right now?
It could make that go up.
To where it would be as it is for this year? So it would just continue that same bar?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is a relatively low tax rate, by the way. It's not like your tax rate is high. And I think we've looked at your total taxes compared to surrounding districts and you guys are at the lower end, so.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up and I wish that I had, I've shared this chart with some of you, but our, we, we've taken a comparison of all of our neighboring school districts and even all of the districts that are in the Mississippi Conference, which are like sized kinds of districts. So all neighboring, which I believe we have like eight districts that border us and, and then also the other remaining Mississippi Conference. And I believe that our community, our community is the second lowest out of the dozen. So, you know, comparatively speaking to other communities, the, the local taxpayers in Princeton are at the very lowest end. It's important information for you to know. And I think it's important information for the greater community to know.
And, and people that don't look at that chart very often and they see that step down, that's very relative. That, that step down doesn't mean that somebody in the district would be saving hundreds of dollars a month in, in tax savings if that step down happened. would be saving hundreds of dollars a month in, in tax savings if that step down happened. It's, it's more in the dollars and cents range. So that, that perspective is helpful when you look at this. Because sometimes you look at this chart and think that there's something out there or something, some, you know, maybe some savings there that, that aren't actually as significant as one would might think.
So I think the big idea for the board to know, and just think back to, was it the month ago or two months ago, the last time Todd was here? You know, we were talking about timing of potential referendums. And we felt like we were kind of pigeonholed into either an August, this coming August referendum, or next November, which is the presidential election. And we all jokingly said neighbors won't even be talking to neighbors, or maybe you said that. And the, the political polarization of, of the world and the community is going to be so toxic likely that I think most any district would, would do everything possible not to have a question on the ballot in that November. So then we were looking at, well, geez, then our only option would be like in August. Now, this presentation tonight demonstrates to you that we aren't pigeonholed. We do have options that we could potentially go out for a referendum in '25, okay? And you just heard me talk for a long time about my strong feeling that it's inevitable that we're gonna have to go out for an operating referendum, right? But here's the fact. The fact is, we have operating needs and we have facility needs. It's just the truth. And, you know, you, you can read the newspaper across any, any community in the 350 districts in the state of Minnesota. Every community is having to go out for a referendum at one point or another. And many do have to go out for a bond and an operating. And I guess that's something that I'm encouraging the board to not shy away from, from the fact that we have needs, right? And we, I feel that the community wants to have strong schools. We are going to have to ask for additional resources to support strong schools. And that's how the structure of Minnesota Finance and schools are. And that's just, like it or not, if, if we want better, better facilities, we gotta go ask the voters to support it. If we want additional dollars more than what the state provides, we have to go and convince the, the community that it's important for them to support that, right? Todd, do you have any commentary, thoughts?
Well, I think it's, it's obviously more difficult when you have to do planning around both a bond referendum and potentially an operating levy. Just a few thoughts to keep in mind. Number one is that unless you're going to do an only mail ballot, operating levies have to be conducted in November. And I do believe there's a set of rural superintendents who are going to the legislature to try to get that changed, try to align operating levies with bond referendum, allow them to be held on five dates, but currently they're not. So your choice basically is do it in November or do it by mail. Not many districts do it by mail. Lake Park, Ottawa's gonna try. And, and we'll see how that works out for them in April. The, the second thing is that remember that in dealing with a general fund problem, you at least have a few more tools than you have with a bond referendum, right? You know, 75%, maybe a little bit more of your money comes from the state for the operating budget. You can also, you can have the state increase formula. You can have the state provide other kinds of funds, like they did for the special education funding. You can also have more students if they come to your district. That increases your funding. With a bond and the facilities projects, there really isn't that much flexibility. Ultimately, you have to go out at some point and raise the money locally. I think the point Ben's making to you on the operating levy is that you're one of a small number of districts, certainly well under 100, that don't have a voter-approved operating levy right now. And so that certainly is in play. The, the last thing to remember is that the bond referendum and operating levies are raised differently from your residents. Operating levies are nearly all, not all, but nearly all is raised from either homes or businesses. And it's raised equally based on market value, basically. A hundred thousand for a home, a hundred thousand for a business. Whereas if you raise bond, you're raising, that money's coming on a different kind of moral sliding scale where businesses take a greater amount of the burden based on every hundred thousand dollars of value. But it also brings, for example, seasonal recreational property into play. Jody's not hit me yet, so my explanation seems to be pretty close.
And all aid property.
What's that? And all aid. And so as a result of that, you, one of the things to think about is, is also how you stage multiple elections based on the tax impact. Litchfield, relatively comparative, I think, community to yours, was successful raising both an operating levy and a bond at the same time in 2019. Shisago Lake has not been successful at passing either a bond or an operating levy going out for both at the same time. It really kind of depends on the community acceptance and, and the value you demonstrate and the foundation you can lay in the district. And a lot of it depends on whether there's, generally speaking, trust in the district's decision-making. To the extent you're going out for a survey, you're gonna learn a lot more about that. So that's what I add to the discussion.
And that's the reason that we don't have the total school taxes shown on this chart, because there are levies that are spread on a different tax base. So we can't, there are two different tax rates for school districts, which is a complicating factor. So to the extent that you are proceeding with something that is spread on net tax capacity, which is what this chart is showing, the tax rate, so that would be a bond referendum or a capital project levy, there'd be a one-for-one correspondence in that. As Todd mentioned, with an operating referendum, that burden is, is more heavily placed on your residential homeowners.
And then with an operating levy, that has a cap per student on it, correct?
Yes, but it's like $2,203 or something. So it's, it's at a pretty high level. There's a, there are a number of metro districts that are at that cap. But, and there are districts that are able to access more than that if they're considered a scarcity district. There are districts that have over $3,000 per pupil. But they're able, they have an exception because they don't have schools, neighboring schools that are close to them.
Could, could you speak to the, you know, because sometimes you say, well, geez, all these metro schools have these big referendums. How come they, can they do that? And it's so hard for rural districts to do that. Can you just explain a little bit to the disadvantages and the inequities? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sharing my biases here, right? But the, the inequities, I'll say it because it's coming from me, of a non-metro district with low property wealth, right? What are the disadvantages to them and the advantages to a metro school that, you know, maybe has Target and 3M and a bunch of other places?
Hopkins, Hopkins has a very, I mean, people are envious of the tax base there. So they do have a lot of commercial industrial property, and they pay at a higher level. So if you look at how much it costs a homeowner there, if they've got a referendum at the cap, you know, your, your homeowners here would pay multiples more than they pay in the Hopkins School District. Because, I mean, it's just the way that the funding, the funding formula works. And that's established by the legislature. That's not a formula that you set, by the way, so.
And I think, you know, that's why it's not just an easy ask for a low-property wealth school district. Because the tax impact to our citizens is so much greater than the tax impact from maybe a higher-property wealth district that just has more to spread the money out.
Absolutely, yeah, that's correct.
Other questions? Any other thoughts, Jody?
I don't think so.
Ryan, anything else?
Nope, I think there's questions.
Why, like, why does Princeton have such less money per pupil than like other school districts?
Well, you know, one of the, one of the pieces is we do, we don't have a voter-approved operating referendum. That's, that's a big one. And then also, I think, I do think that that dollar amount, that $3,000 per pupil unit that's coming straight from our audit does include all taxes payable. So that would include bond, building bonds as well, right? That's according to our audit, I believe.
I think it's general fund. But they don't have it in front.
The biggest, the biggest reason would be the, that we don't, we don't have a tech levy, and we don't have a voter-approved operating referendum as well. We've been able to maintain the, the level of programming that we have, that I'm quite proud of. And I think we all should be quite proud of with some of the, the least amount of funding in the state. I mean, I don't, that's something that we need to recognize. We're a high-quality, high-performing school district that we should be so proud of and have all this tiger pride while knowing that we have the least amount of money to do what we do.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
It is amazing, thanks for pointing that out. And I tell you what, it's pretty, it's, for, you know, we lose a lot of sleep over this stuff, right? Trying to operate with, with less. And have super competitive, you know, packages for our team members, right? It's just, it is what it is. But it's, as, as I mentioned in my, my narrative tonight is, you can only do it for so long. I wish we could do it forever, but we gotta be realists too, right? We're proud that we live in a conservative community, and we know that our, our people are highly sensitive to taxes, right? We know that, it's no secret. So, you know, we try and have this balancing act, this great, high-performing school district with the best practices while, you know, doing it on a bargain budget.
Good stories.
I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I think the board has lots of difficult decisions that they're gonna have to make over the course of the next several months. And we just appreciate having partners like all of you to be able to lean on and help navigate us through some of the very sophisticated content associated with taxes and tax law and those kinds of things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, we move on to our next informational item is the transportation contract. All right, we are in the middle of negotiations with Palmer Bus Service, our bus contractor. They, the proposed rates that you see in the first chart are actually on our main bussie is 5% and 5% each year, all the way across, and 4% for the smaller categories over the course of the seven years that they proposed. We volleyed back at them after talking to finance. We, we proposed, we accepted their 5 and 5 on the first year. They have the same challenges with, with the state legislature is they now have to pay unemployment for all their staff. They have the safe and sick time. All those pieces that, of course, we're looking at are also hitting our people that we have as contracted services. So we accepted the 5 and 5, but for the first two years. But then after that, we thought it would be important to link their proposal, their increases to our increases that are coming from the state. So we volleyed back, okay, on the first two years, but on, we didn't want a seven-year contract. We wanted a six, so we're a 2-2-2, because every two years we can look at it, should we need to. We volleyed back that we would like to match whatever the formula increases for that year. So after these two years, they agreed to that. That was a big agreement, because that locks them in. If the state gives us 2%, that's the increase that they will get on their, they'll get the same increase we get. We also asked to move the fuel to $3, from $3.50 to gradually move that up, because anything over $3.50 a gallon, we pay that amount. They were not agreeable to that. To be honest, there are districts out there with a lower cap than us. They were not interested in moving in that direction. Gas is, or diesel, you know, it has been fluctuating, it's up and down. It has come down. It was really, it was significant last year. It's much more significant than it's going to be, hopefully, this year. Hopefully, it's a little better this year. And then the last things we talked about is, we went to Transfinder like two years ago, is to have some language in the contract that basically indicates that should we part ways with Palmer, that our routes that are in Transfinder stay with the district. That would be an important piece to us. And Chris from Palmer, he said he understands our position there because he knows of some contractors who are very territorial about that. And so they leave and the routes go with them. And then we, you get a different contractor and you have to start all over. And I believe that's what was happening when I took over here, so. Also, if you were around in the beginning, if you were paying attention, Michelle and Jackie, and we were covering dispatching over at Palmer, because we're very short drivers. We're still struggling with drivers. That's not a, not a surprise. But I called up Palmer in September, management, and I said, Shane, I can't do this. We gotta find somebody just to do dispatching that does not have a bus license. Because your first thing is you pull, because we're so short. They were able to, they agreed, and they filled that position within two weeks for us. They were very, very accommodating. They saw what we were dealing with. They appreciated that we were trying to help them out. It did give us a look into their day-to-day operations and what happens. But, you know, you're talking four hours every day. Somebody from our office would have to be there. We were getting kind of behind on things. So thank goodness our auditors at that time were understanding. So that's what we volleyed back. They agreed to our volley back, all except for the $3.50. We're going, as administration, we are recommending that we move forward with the contract. Palmer is going to work on the actual contract pieces for our February meeting. We talked about this in our previous finance meeting. And I, I got the sense that, you know, we were good to move forward with the contract. I would also like to point out that Palmer is looking to build a facility, and they hope they have it done by the end of '24. And I think it goes out there by Glenn Mallcraft, the sign out there. There's a sign there now? I don't go that way.
So that's pretty permanent.
Yes.
It's not a rumor anymore.
Yeah, and just so that you're aware, when you change out a bus contractor, usually you change out the management at the top-end piece. Your bus drivers and your onsite people typically stay the same. And I think those that have been on the board a long time know that, because you have come through some, and we have drivers. We had one driver here that we recognized that has driven for this district for 50 years. That's pretty good, to have that kind of dedication. And there are others that have driven, that have been driving for many, many years here and have driven with different contractors. There you go. That's what I have to report on the transportation contract.
Does anybody have any questions from Michelle on that?
Michelle, you said you ran it by like the finance, and our finance committee was thumbs up on it?
Those that attended that finance meeting?
The only thing I would add is I know we talked about the Transfinder, and you said that, that will, you know, that when it does stay with us, then other companies also use that same tool. That's a, that's a huge benefit there.
Yes. Yeah, keeping the, our routes is huge, yes.
All right, we will move on to parameters.
Yeah, yeah, I think at this point, we're gonna ask Michelle to give you really a full, a full idea of our budget analysis as we look at the, what was next, next year, '24, '25? Yeah, okay. So Michelle's gonna walk us through.
All of those items?
All of them.
So, yeah, every year we talk about parameters. There is nothing new in the process that we are doing different, but some of our parameters are set for us. One of those parameters is the state percent. As you know, every other year, when we go into the biennium session of the first year, we have educated guesses on where we might land to start building our budget. This year is the second year of the biennium and it is set at 2%. So, and typically, I think we've had one year out of all the years that I have been here, and it was just lately, it was about, was it three years ago, where they bumped it up slightly from their original in the second year? So it's not a common thing for them to change the percent. So 2% is probably what we're looking at for the state.
And I just, I think it's really important for everybody to realize that two, it's 2% on the per pupil unit. Okay? So that's different than 2% of our whole fund. Right? It's a huge difference, like, it's not 200, 2% of, you know, whatever our total budget is, 50 million, 40 million. Yeah, it's 2% added to the student formula, which again, brings us anywhere between $500,000 and $550,000 of additional revenue.
The second thing we have on here for parameters is enrollment. And you guys usually vote for us on where you think we should go with enrollment for the next budget cycle. So if you bring up the first chart, you've seen this every year for a long time. We look at enrollment in multiple different ways. And we actually get different answers in looking at it different ways. And this is to make you aware that different answers can happen. I will bring in the conversation of last '23 and '22. We made decisions at the board table that indicated that our enrollment was gonna drop based on the analysis. We opened up our doors with the increase in students. We did that two years in a row. So when we came into '23, '24, and we looked at a similar schematic, actually, we decided that we wouldn't project that we were going to gain students because that would sink us in one year. But we were going to look at a reasonable amount, so we decided that, the board decided to go with a 35 student reduction. And after we opened our doors and our October 1 numbers came in, we actually dropped close to 120 students in total. So 30 of five of them we had already recognized. Most of that happened through K8. Our high school enrollment was our projections. If everything goes well throughout the year, because as you know, students move in and move out and if they're only here one day, we only get paid for them to be here one day. So, sometimes we don't make our revised budget projections. And that's kind of what happened to us last year also, the revised budget, we dropped during the school year. Each month, just little by little, and just enough to bring us below what our projections were. Now, it wasn't significant, but everything, you know, every little bit that we lose is really, it hurts. So, right now, if we look at the '23, '24 revised estimate, we have looked at, as you see, I got one, two, three, four, or five ways that we looked at it. The average of all those ways is 3100, basically. The grade analysis dash average, the one third in, is at 3097. And Excel, which we have historically looked at these two the heaviest, is at 3074. So looking at all those three numbers, you know, it, ending up at around that 3097 is probably a good estimate at this point in time. So that is what we're moving forward with for the revised budget. Our '24, '25, when you go down to the next column again, we look at it five different ways. And kindergarten plays into this. So each of the, the columns has the number of kindergarteners associated with the column. Just as a reference point. As you see, if you look downward, I took the difference between the 3097 with the average, the low, the high, and so on. We've got our highest where we would drop, worst case scenario, at this juncture is a negative 115 students. Our best number is 76.
Negative 76 or?
No, positive. Our best number is 76. Unfortunately, as much as we would like to be able to say that 76 more students are going to come into the district, at this point, I don't think we can leave that one on the table. So I would suggest we move that off. So that leaves us with the next best at 3049 with 47 kids, negative 47. All the way up to that negative 115. So I went over and these are just some options that I put together. They're not your only options. But I put together 59, negative 59, looking at that Excel spreadsheet because we, we have been historically used that, it's the old school finance process that we have used for years. So that's at negative 59. I looked at our current senior class and looked at their 10th grade year. And then I subtracted that off of our kindergarten class coming in. And then looked at the difference on the rest of the grades and I came up with a negative 72 because you're gonna have the variance between the kindergarten and graduating. And the reason I use 10th grade is because if you look at 12th grade, you got people in PSCO, we got people, early grads, so all that stuff going on. So 10th grade, I know those kids that are there. And then, of course, our worst case scenario number of negative 116 kids. So of course, each of those numbers drives a total. And finance, Eric, you had some thoughts in finance, Strandberg? When we talked about this, about what you thought. You were probably the most vocal, so I'm calling you out.
You gotta remember what you said.
Yeah, I thought that 3,025 was an all right number, but I wouldn't mind going a little lower than that even. Because we could always increase if needed, you know, add staff. We have to have something to build the number around.
So take a larger deduct than 72 students?
I think a deduct of around 80 to 85 is probably where we wanna look. If you look at the next, the next page is the kindergarten, come to kindergarten with 300.
The next.
I've got a quick question. If we changed that 3025, I, I think you said like, instead of 72, it'd be like 80, 85? We can always go back and revise that if we hit higher enrollment numbers, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do that every year. I mean, when, when we, when we have, once the summer happens, it's actually a pretty common practice that we will add staff in July and even August, as late as like late August. Especially on that kindergarten, yeah, kindergarten number is the hardest one to project. And actually, Eric Strandberg was gonna share, I think, a really good point, so I'll just let him finish his thought.
Well, if you look at your kindergarten numbers are 300 students is what the census projects it at. And typically, we only get about 70% of those. So you're really only looking at about 210 students is what we would most likely get through our doors. And typically, I mean, Sarah can probably answer this too, like, we get a fair amount of enrollment in the spring and then it just kind of like, it's stagnant for two months until August, and people are like, oh crap, I gotta send my kid out for school. So, kinda like, so I mean, it stays steady at like 170 probably for a while. And then it just spikes by like 34 kids.
And that's, that's the biggest thing to know is that, like, we have to set a number to start creating a budget. But your budget is always like your best guess. Like, you're using all kinds of data to, to come up with your best guess. And, and it always changes. Now, your kindergarten piece is something that will, we just always know that it will constantly change. And, and Eric's right, like, you know, the only thing we can do now is we get all the census data. So based upon all the birth rates in the district, based upon, you know, all the information we can get. We, and then we can look back at the last 10 years and see that historically, we get anywhere between 70 to 75% of census. So you're able to say, well, that's gonna be our best estimate. Now, and Michelle's got all kinds of very sophisticated calculations to help us here, but if you wanted to look at this in the most simplistic form, you could say, okay, what 70% of census? What is that? Did you say 210? 210. You take the number of seniors graduating this year. Right around 300. What's the difference between 300 and 210? 90.
Plus you gotta look at, there's not a ton of housing developments or apartment buildings being built. Right now, so you're not gonna have massive influx of residents.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, it's more complicated than that, but if you just wanted to be real simple about it, you can, it's pretty easy to do it that way too.
So yeah, we are gonna let you now think on that for a couple of weeks. And then we are going to ask you to vote on this at our first February meeting. And as I said, this is our typical process, nothing has changed. And then, the last parameter we typically talk about at this time of year, and it's usually every other year, so this actually isn't the year that we would talk about because we are negotiating right now, we are in progress yet with our teachers. But typically, this is where you start that thought process of what that might look like. And we put it on here to, so that every year we're reminded, yep, you know, we, we don't wanna miss setting that parameter in the off year, so.
You know, the, the, you know, related to negotiations, I mean, one positive is that we do have all of our groups settled except for one, right? Which, I mean, we know through talking to our, our other districts across the state, you know, many districts have no group settled yet. So I mean, we're, we're hopeful and optimistic that we get our last group settled at some point. And we're gonna continue to work towards that, but, you know, we do have the real numbers for all of the other groups that are already settled. So, important to know.
All right, and then typically, the last thing we do at this meeting is look at a budget analysis. And at this point, we are, our current budget is our original budget from what we said in June. We are currently working on a revised budget in our office that will replace the second box. So, I mean, kinda walk through the spreadsheet. So the fund balance on the left hand side.
Is it something we can project?
Let's put it on the screen.
Yeah. Emily, can you put it on the screen?
Now we're really tough here.
Pipe my kiss, man.
Can you repeat that, Michelle?
Can you project the budget analysis sheet?
You bet.
Chad was just telling me, he's sitting right next to me, so he can hear me.
You wanna start walking us through why she's giving it up there?
Sure. So starting on the left hand side of the sheet, the 2019 fund balance, we're, and I'm gonna clarify here. We are only looking at the unassigned area. As the board is well aware, we have reserves in assigned categories and a committed category. Right now, we are only looking at the unassigned area. We approve budgets for each of those other areas also, but this is just the big picture unassigned area. Our operating budget, so in 2019, which was a year before the pandemic, our fund balance was at 5.3. We came into 1920 and our fund balance actually increased to 5.5, or almost 5.6. One of the pieces that caused that fund balance to go up is we shut down March through May. All of our spring sports did not run, so we saved on busing. Some of those auxiliary areas, even though all of our teachers were teaching, all of our administration was working. We had some areas that were not functioning, and one of them, right off the top of my head, I'd say is activities. So we weren't paying for officials, we weren't paying.
Coaches.
For, no, we paid some coaching, but we didn't pay for all of it. And of course, the transportation to get to the events that those, those, um, spring teams go to. So we actually increased the fund balance at the end of '20. '21 was still the pandemic, 2021, and we opened with more activity, but still less than our normal. So we were not spending, you know, use activities as an example. Our buses were not on the road for as many events. We were running at probably half capacity at that point in the fall. So we gradually picked up speed, so as the pandemic eased and whatnot, and came back to normal operations by the year of '22. And as you can see, our fund balance dropped from 5.2, just short of 5.5 to just short of 5.1 million. That was a planned drop, and we had been planning to drop, but we had some things happen with that pandemic that helped us out. We moved from '22 into '23. Five, we moved from twenty-two into twenty-three. And at revised budget time, we talked heavy about we, we were definitely going to be dropping a little more than what we typically had dropped in the past, even at the ninety-eight percent um mark. And we did drop. We went from that just under five point one million down to four point four million, which is basically our ten percent fund balance um in a policy that you carry, the, the district would carry in the unassigned category. So um to illustrate a little bit about how our budget may look going into next year is we know our original budget that we adopted. So that is what we are basing our fund balances on right now because revised is not completed. So um we actually came into twenty-four um pretty, feeling pretty good about where we were sitting with a variance of just short of three hundred thousand dollars, negative three hundred. And, and at a thirty-nine million dollar budget, you know, that's, that's a percent of our budget. Which you can easily make up by, by things coming in better in certain areas than all you snow plowing as an example. I don't want to jinx this, Jackie in our office would say, Michelle, don't say it out loud. But we're not plowing as much snow.
Michelle, stop.
We, we were warmer at the first part of um the school year, so hopefully that helps us out. So there's all these variances that can happen in our main, main operating budget that, you know, we, we look and we hope we are, are budgeting um worst case scenario, but not to the extreme at a reasonable rate.
So I, I just have a, a little bit of commentary to, to add on to that. You know, generally speaking, in previous years to, to this year's budget, we had adopted a budget that was maybe like one point two million dollars deficit spent, right? And you, you've all been aware of that with the idea that we could potentially fu, uh, spend down our fund balance. We wanted to keep our class size parameters where, where we had them. And um, in, in knowing that if, if we had, you know, we generally speaking try and underspend our budget. You know, so if, if we adopted in previous years a one point two million dollar deficit, if, if we underspent that a little bit, we, we might only uh have to dip into the fund balance five hundred thousand or, you know, what have you, and not that full one point two. And, um, and that's kind of where you can see some of these planned drops over the years. Now, you're gonna see that last, last year was, we adopted a budget that was not one point two million dollars deficit, which uh it was only the three hundred thousand dollar deficit, which obviously uh is good, but there's a reason for that. Okay, the reason, and, and I spoke to it on the additional state funding that we've received, that we had received. We received uh about one point four million dollars in, in the cross subsidy for special ed, right? So those dollars were added to the revenue side, right? And we were, and we also got four percent versus two percent. So that additional funding was the reason why we were able to adopt a current year budget of only a, a three hundred thousand dollar negative, right? And we did some right sizing and some reductions even in the spring to get us to that point. So there's a reason why we're at that three hundred thousand, which you start the year out thinking, okay, we're feeling okay about this year, but we knew that we were gonna fall off a cliff uh the following year. And that's, that's the, the area, next school year that we're, have been the most scared of and are deathly afraid of right now. But even with that three hundred thousand dollar negative, here's what we got going. Michelle's talking about um, how are we doing? Well, we might be doing okay on some snow plowing and some energy cost savings. But then I'm gonna be the Debbie Downer and say, we have a hundred less students. Okay, so right away my head goes to, that's really not, when we do the revised budget, right? That's, that's gonna end up being more like a, in the negative, you know, one million plus. To where I'm quite sure that next, you know, when we're doing audit next fall, right? That we will be, that, that will demonstrate us uh dipping into our fund balance further. So just um my, my best gap estimate would be next year um at audit. From current year, our fund balance will go from four point four million probably to under four, right? Which is well below what the board has in policy. And, and then, as Michelle will demonstrate through our projections for next year, and I alluded to it, a three point five million to four million, okay? Then that fund balance is gone. Okay, and then what, then what?
And I also want to point out to Ben's comments that we can't forget that during this timeframe, we have had federal money. And the first chunk of that ongoing federal, that one-time federal money came off coming into this year. So the state money helped backfill some of that also. So um but we, we felt relatively good in the spring or summer because spring was a little fuzzy for me, as you all know, but um. So looking at what we know currently, because that's the budget we have. And if you look at the ninety-nine and the ninety-eight percent, um, if we hit any of those, those targets in our original budget, we might go up slightly um instead of going down. But we do have challenges for this year, first of all, um, our enrollment. So we are calculating all those things right now to see what impact um that may have. So, but we're gonna take this going forward into twenty-four and I, again, we look at it and as if everything was at a hundred percent, um, which we know that's really not realistic. We hope it doesn't hit one hundred and one percent. We hope we hit that ninety-nine or ninety-eight percent um in those targets. It's always our target and um we are typically hitting our budget did between the ninety-nine and ninety-eight percent. But moving forward, taking our current year revenue projection of thirty-nine million, I put in a, a negative enrollment number in here, but it's based on um the calculation that happened for twenty-two or for twenty-four this year. So this is not a calculation based on what you're gonna vote on. That will change that number. So using what I, what I knew for this year, we plugged in the negative four hundred and fifty thousand. As um Ben indicated, we, we're getting two percent on the formula. That is per student, that's seven thousand two hundred and eighty. So that's about just short of five hundred thousand estimated. Uh, special education, that box right now is not filled in um for any amount. They run, our next run is not until the end of January. That's usually the one that we use um to base our projection on for the following year. On compensatory, we do have a little bit of an idea. That is right now seventy-five thousand more than what it was um for twenty coming into twenty-three, twenty-four because it's twenty-four, twenty-five. It is, is up slightly, but it is not because we have more free and reduced students filling out the federal form. It's based on the formula moves. We actually have less people that, that qualify for free and reduced because of the lot, every, we went to free. All, everybody's free, so we don't have as many paper applications being filled out. So um had we had the same amount, this number probably would have been higher. So that moves are total additional with the revenue from, you know, well, it's thirty-nine two hundred thousand, um, not much higher, about a hundred thousand dollars higher than than what it currently is. Because basically the dropping enrollment um and the two percent are offsetting each other. Expenses, in taking uh our current expenses, salary and benefits and everything that goes along with running a school district. There's a salary benefit increase, there's a plug number right now, one million eight. The other increase, and this is without looking at things in detail, we just put in two hundred and fifty thousand. That will cover the um transportation agreement plus more. Because there's always insurances, workers' comp, property and liability, uh, those things are always going up on us. And then here is another thing that is really going to he, hit, hit is the fund nineteen reduction, as we call it, the COVID nineteen, the last of that money is coming off. And we have about one point one million of that in ongoing expenses. That was the board's decision to keep our class sizes as low as we have them. So that is what that is paying for is um teachers in our classrooms and that one-time money is now gone. So we got one point one million coming off, which um actually increases the unassigned area because it comes out of fund nineteen, goes right into our fund one. So that makes our total expenses at forty-two-five. Doesn't match our thirty-nine-one, uh, remotely close. So this estimated um variance is about three point three million with an estimated fund balance of seven hundred and fifty thousand. We would be out of money in one year if we do not do some kind of cost containment strategy going into next year. If we are at the ninety-nine and ninety-eight with our fund balances, um, of course, those projections get a little bit better. You know, we would drop two point nine million and two point five, but there's still significant dollars, there are millions.
Have you ever finished under ninety-eight percent?
Uh, one year.
So it's gonna be.
It, it typically is, and I'm gonna say that it won't be. Lots of things, you know, we hope that revenue comes in better and expenses come in better. Some years we meet that target, some we don't. We have never hit the one hundred and we have never been at a hundred and one. This is good. So we have been between the ninety-eight and ninety-nine. And it, it's hard, um, the last couple of years, you know, we have talked um at finance and, and here at the board table that um our costs in building the ground, I mean, things like paper products and um mechanical fixing things. You know, just trying to keep up with, with how much it's going up in the current year has been a struggle.
Well, and, you know, in, in addition to that, just the teaching and learning side of things. You know, every year we share with the board the spreadsheet of all of our different software programs. And uh, you know, there really isn't a checks and balance for, for some of those companies. And it seems like there's a five to ten percent increase yearly, whether it be Skyward, Schoology, Seesaw, I mean, literally dozens and dozens of different programs that we rely on. And uh, it's difficult to just abandon those after it's something that uh is a tool that, that we rely heavily on. But, but you know, all of those things will have to be looked at. But those are all the things that just are increasing on a yearly basis.
Uh, any questions? Um, of course, uh, February is a heavy month for budgets, so we will continue to work um through our process as we normally do.
The board, I want the board to know is that um I am working with Jessica on our next staff development day on February ninth to be able to uh share a detailed presentation with all of our staff members regarding the state of our district as it relates to budget. So that people, you know, can see, you know, where we're at. I do intend to follow up that meeting at each building to be available to answer any questions or get uh feedback from them as well. And then we'll be working through finance committee and at the board table, at, you know, work sessions to you know, find strategies on how we want to, how do we, how do we bridge that, that gap of the three and a half million dollars or so. And I think this illustrates the, the whole idea that these are, these are ongoing every year things, right? So in there's no reason for me to believe then that when we're sitting here a year from now talking about the following year budget that we won't, will not be in the same exact situation. Because the math just doesn't work out. A two percent increase from the state of five hundred thousand. And then when you see, you know, the, the additional expenditures on a yearly basis, we can't sustain that, you can't maintain it. Right, and um this is super emotional stuff and it's, it is kind of you going through the grieving process because this all stinks. We've been, we've been working in this for, for months now. And as a matter of fact, we kind of, we could have told you a year ago that we were gonna be in a difficult situation. We did, right? We knew that the federal dollars were, were, were leaving, you know, we knew, we knew all of these things. We knew that the day was, was gonna come. But you know, we've been, so maybe we're a little further along in the, the grieving process. But at the end of the day, we're, we're gonna have to work to, to find a budget that we can continue to provide a high-quality education while staying in the black. And that's gonna be this great challenge that we have. But as I was saying, it's, it's an emotional topic, but, but at the end of the day, it's just a big math problem. Right, we take, we take what we project for revenue, that goes on one line. What we know for expenditures will be, that goes in another line. You subtract and add, and that's the number. It sucks, but it is the way it is and I can't change it and I don't know that any of you can change it. That's, that's where the numbers sit. So, so some hard decisions are gonna have to be made.
All right, any questions before we move on? The budget and parameters and. All right, we'll move to our first action item, um, our legislative priorities.
You know, I think I'm gonna let Sarah speak to this because in her superintendent internship work, she's done a lot of work. So maybe um you, you presented on it, so maybe give the one-minute version.
Yep.
And then we'll let the board vote on it and then this will become official.
Perfect. So this, the draft that we presented on in information in December, what you see in front of you tonight under action is very similar. The only adjustments were that we added on the front first page a statement that Ben, Ben referenced before about how um inflation has not kept up for the last twenty years. And then we prioritize those two boxes where it says priority one and priority two with the um fair and equitable funding and the fully funded state mandates. But what we presented is, it's one hundred percent the same.
All right, any questions from Sarah or Ben or?
No, I, I, I do think that we need to acknowledge the public engagement group to put a lot of time and, and work into this as well. So thank you. And this will be good, I, and once this is officially adopted, uh, I think this is something that we, we should have, you know, copies for you to have available, so when you're talking to people, you can share it, right?
I really like the way it turned out. It's very easy to understand and it's a quick read, yep, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
All right, motion's been made by Eric Strandberg, seconded by Eric Minx. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Last action item is at-will contracts.
Make a motion to approve the at-will contracts that's presented.
Second. All right, a motion's been made by Eric Strandberg, seconded by Don to approve um the at-will contract changes that are attached. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. There are no additions. We have no additions, we do have some future meetings listed there that you can look at. Then we need a motion to close the board meeting to discuss negotiation strategies.
I'll make a motion to close the board meeting. Discuss negotiation strategies.
Motion's been made by Eric Stramberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don, any comments, questions?
I have a question, can I stay on for this?
Yes, there, there will be no vote, so yeah, absolutely, you can stand.
All right, thank you.
All right. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, or motion's been approved and meeting is now closed.